I was meeting on the planning commission for September fifth, twenty twenty three in Kingland County. Who's coming on today?
Mr. Callum.
Here.
Ms. Height.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
Mr. Schluter.
Yep.
Chairman Greenwood.
Here. We don't have any electronic participation, but everyone's here. So you have to view and adoption of the meeting agenda as everybody looked at the amended agenda that was amended on August the twenty fifth. We have other corrections.
I'll make the motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second. Questions may be properly seconded at the discussion. No?
Ms. Height. Mr. Williams. Mr. Schluter.
Aye.
Mr. Callum.
Aye.
Chairman Greenwood.
Aye. I think we have on the agenda is approval of the minutes. So do we want to do each one individually or do we just do a blanket for A, B, and C, August first, August tenth, and August twenty first? If I have any questions, any of them specifically or?
I didn't have it combined, so. We do all three.
We all agree at the same time. They don't have a motion.
So I'm.
Okay. Motion A and probably seconded twice. The roll call?
Mr. Williams. Mr. Schluter.
Aye.
Mr. Callum.
Aye.
Ms. Height.
Ah.
Chairman Greenwood.
Ah. Minutes are approved for all three dates. Next item we have on the agenda is the citizens' comment period. We have one opportunity of three minutes per individual on non-public hearing matters and. Are we still having a public hearing tonight? We can talk about that later.
We're gonna talk about it briefly.
Okay, so as as far as I know right this second, you can just state what you want to talk about. If you state your name and your address, we'll open the citizens' comment period three minutes or less.
Hi, my name's Lisa Mason. I'm in the second district. I'm before you again to appeal that we change the bed and breakfast from a by right to a conditional use. If you have someone coming into your neighborhood whom you don't know and staying overnight, I think the neighbors should know that that's going on in their neighborhood. Anytime you invite the public in, especially to stay overnight and to do, you know, to, it's not your neighbors, that we should have to change that in the use matrix to a conditional use permit, much as the short-term rentals are. Thank you.
What else in the audience? Is there anyone online that we know? Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I will close as a comment period. Next item we have on the agenda is public hearing, Z O one dash two thousand twenty-two, I guess. Ms. Graham, I guess you have a presentation or something.
Uh, Mr. Wilson approached me just before the meeting. We had this as a rezoning, um, public hearing, um, and I believe they want to go for a conditional use permit versus the rezoning. So they're requesting a deferral at this time.
Need to vote on that or just if we have to get pushed that we just?
They're just requesting that it be deferred.
Everybody.
They're gonna come.
Epic people because they're here for the public hearing, should we?
Well, it's not gonna be a reason.
It's not gonna be the same.
Okay, it'll it'll come back as a conditional use permit.
Okay. There's no need to have one because it's not even the same issue.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on that or not? Like I said, they've asked for it, so we'll wait for the the thing that might be for the next meeting or oh yeah.
Um, I haven't had a chance to get with Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Just curious, I mean that.
Have a get up us some a chance to get together and go over the CUP process.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Get that section and move down just quick. Move right into unfinished business. Ms. Graham, do you have anything?
Couple of things coming up. Um, our October third meeting, we will hold a public hearing on the ordinance changes that we've been working on. And we also have central apartments that is supposed to be coming back before you for a public hearing. And then the Kistner Sand and Gravel, they requested a deferral until January.
Have we heard any more for the Wawa or the apartments up at the, or is it gonna talk about that later maybe?
Well, we we have plans that have been submitted for the Wawa. So good news.
So can you can you elaborate on that? So we have plans that have been submitted.
Site plan and construction, not not the building portion, but just the site plan and stuff like that.
So we probably got two or three months of getting through that portion of it before we probably even see a building application.
We submitted everything out last week, so we're awaiting comments.
And Starbucks and Dunkin?
Uh, we have, uh, if we have the Starbucks, it's been under review and they're addressing comments now. Um, nothing on Dunkin yet.
Okay, so Star Starbucks has has come to you, application, you've gone back to them with questions, clarification.
We've gotten same thing. We've gotten site plan information and we have sent that out to, uh, for utility review, for E and S review. It's gone for D E Q review, V dot. And along the, um, information has come back and we've sent out a review letter after them already of comments that have to be addressed.
Care to give an opinion of when you think somebody will break ground on one of these two projects? Probably looking early next year.
We're we're already into September.
I just I just get a lot of questions about that and I just like to give give people some sort of useful information because the the social media, you know, we according to them, we're getting two or three Walmarts and.
Target, three pharmacies.
Like to be able to at least put some good information out there, which the, I think Mr. Ashcraft is responsible for, but for the blog that comes out pretty regularly, that that has taken care of a lot of that. I think that's probably one of the most useful tools I've seen out there in a while.
I don't think it will be long for either one. Probably December or January. Um, and because they have their standard plans that they use, I think once they break ground, I don't think it will take very long.
It'll be like one tap of hand, like once they start, it's pretty much done in a month and a half or something like that.
I I don't have an exact date. I will see if I can narrow it down from each one of them, but.
And is there anything you can share with us on the orchards project?
We did get phase one. Uh, we we got that in the last week. Or yes. Or units. I I felt no, I forgot about what I had.
The residential units, not on the commercial side.
Residential. Nothing on the commercial.
Okay, one that, uh, part of what was holding that up was V dot, wasn't it?
Um, it's it's still under review. There's nothing that has, their cycling has not been approved yet. It's been through the review process as well.
Do you see a significant changes to what they submitted?
No, we we will be getting that out to y'all soon to take a look at and to comment on as well. Uh, we're just kind of waiting to get some of the other comments in. It could change a couple of times, so.
And it's been moved because like I said, it was too close to the intersection because the capacity for Burger King was so small, they don't think that the entrance that they built will be able to handle it. So I was just told that they're gonna have to push it back on three sixty further back and on thirty because if they can't, it's too many cars on it close to the intersection. So suppose that they have to be straight across from the food line exits, so that that would be better actually. Nothing that's entering, exiting off of three sixty or thirty that close to the intersection. But I mean, that's like I said, I guess we'll see that.
And that's what they're proposing.
They did, okay, good.
V dot did not want it to use that.
Right, it's V dot after they'd already built it. That was for the Burger King lot and it would not hold capacity for Wawas.
And 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 maybe you can't speak to this, and if you can, I certainly understand, but the the sand and gravel that was, I guess, deferred till sometime in the future. Have you received any type of clarification from V dot?
I have not received an approval from V dot.
Okay.
Question, Mr.?
I feel like she's answered it. It's like we got going.
Well, I'd rather have it done here than on social media.
That's all true.
Yes. And like I said, Mr. Ashcraft's blog is where we've been informative to people.
You have been awful on the weather a couple of times.
So have the weather.
Better than most weather people, but.
If y'all would like, I can email you, um, a preliminary plan of each of these site plans to take a look at.
I'd not, I I personally don't. I just like to kind of know when people ask.
Well, I bet it.
Not until we got something more definite.
Yeah, and it's too much to look at.
There will be a few changes before they get closer to finalization.
I think that the bulk of these projects fall into third and fourth, so we get a lot of questions on. Just kind of win.
They've all come in just recently.
About to move into new business. Maybe some of that was new business. Is there any extra new business?
No, I think we've got it covered right now.
Yeah, that's real, that's real, right? Working time.
We're gonna break the record.
He said we had the special report now.
That's true. Okay.
Mr. Chair. I could, uh, not to put the cart before the horse so much, but I know that October, you said October third meeting could be the first public hearing for the ordinance changes that we had recommended. Phase two of this. What would be your idea of a good starting point for the next?
So we we do have a list. Um, I think we need to probably look at that list and narrow it down to a couple of. Um, I do want us to really take a good look at our comp plan and then kind of, you know, see where these new changes mirror into that. One of the big things I think we really need to look at is some rezonings on our quarter. That's a that's a big thing. And get some site ready, um, properties. It's really, uh, it sounds like a lot, but there really, there is not a lot of properties that would need a lot of changes. And I know we talked about it before, you know, notifying the property owners and giving them the opportunity to come in and speak before we we did something. But I mean, this is something that's discussed in us at our comp plan and I I think it's needed.
Our staff and our special committee report, it's Mr. Rover, if you can handle that, or I guess we have a packet here.
This encompasses the majority of the reports for the month of August. Uh, so the first one is the combination of the planning and the zoning reports. Uh, you'll notice that for the month of August, we did eighteen new single-family dwellings. Twenty land disturbance permits, and I would like to point out for the planning, uh, items down at the bottom, we did go back through the numbers. The numbers were off a little bit based on admins and looking at a couple of different reports. So you'll notice, um, that those those numbers throughout the year from January to August are actually at fifty um, instead of where they were at before. So you may want to work back through your prior reports, um, because those numbers have been adjusted. So they are higher than what they had been reported previously. And so the other reports that are in there, of course, are the custom report that provides the details, uh, for the actual permits that were issued for the month. There are some that you're gonna see on the building side that haven't been issued yet, and it's just a matter of, we're waiting for the ownership that just today changed over from two different builders. Um, so that'll show up in the month of September on the building side. So just point that out. And then the zoning log that just has some detailed activities for the permits. And then the E and S and the zoning inspections for the month of August. What we're still working on is the property maintenance report, and that's just because it's so detailed. And that's a manual report that Andy and I sit down together and go through to make sure that we hit all of the inspections that he's done for the month. Um, so we'll probably have that done tomorrow. So once I have that, I'll email or give Barbara to email out the whole packet with the property maintenance report. So if you have any questions, once you get it, feel free to respond back to us.
Do you have any questions for her? I mean, you haven't had a chance to look at this particular one. Maybe to look, have a look at it or.
What what kind of follows in the, I guess, the violation law, poll business, however you want to look at it, but the the pole barn that was built, that was supposed to be coming to us.
That actually, um, it was a variance.
Okay.
That was the BCA and they did approve it.
They did approve, okay, so.
Hang on.
Do we, I I was thinking about it today. Do we, uh, I know we can follow it on the on the website or or maybe look it up ourselves, but when these cases leave us, then they go up to the board. How how can we find out the disposition of some of these cases after they leave us?
We can certainly report back at the following beginning.
I I know there were some cases like the the Airbnb with the full lease, that was a big one. Then we had the Coho Palm. When they were, you're looking to enlarge the boathouse and stuff like that. And then, I think down on the Palaki, uh, the boathouse where the cat walls down there.
And a lot of times it's an ordinance, a resolution that's approved, but we can certainly, uh, I think I could give you a report back on whatever the board, you know, voted on.
I just think it's a good scorecard for us to know how much of the stuff that we send up is getting approved or disapproved kind of. And that way we can look back and kind of see what the rationale was behind that.
And when it's something similar to the board, like I said, have a like a white board, not can't have it before, but have, because like I said, once stuff even comes to us, you don't hear from it for a few months and then you forget about it. And it's like, whatever happened to that thing that started in January? Yeah, it'd be nice to have like a running total or at least a sheet we can all look at and say, well, we did it back in twenty twenty-two, and this is where it is now. It's on hold. This one's went to planning, but like I said, that one went to zoning appeals, but zoning appeals doesn't come back to the board either. So, right, that would be something that we could maybe just be told about. So that that would be good.
Well, we we pretty much voted, I almost, well, we we discussed that all the Airbnbs now are going to be conditional use permits. And so if if that one went up to the board and was denied, it'd be nice to know why it was denied. So that when we're in front of people again, we can maybe try to fix some of the wrongs that that would appease the board when it goes up to them.
And that's what we did do with that last one because they had all those exceptions and the board said, maybe come back for us to look at the ordinance. And we did, so to add some of those things into the general ordinance so that we wouldn't have to do such special additions all the time. But yeah, that was one thing that we did do.
That's something we certainly did, let's see, yeah.
I'd actually be interested to see if there'd be something like that posted out on the website that not only, you know, be reported back to us, but something that anyone could easily go out and see, you know, once it has come to us, you know, from a public hearings perspective, and we've done a vote, that it also indicates from the board. I I don't know if that's something that y'all would be willing to put out there easily that people could see.
So like a separate sidebar?
Yeah, just a list that would just have each one of the, um, as an example, the Z O one, twenty twenty-two, you could have it broken out to this was a, you know, public hearing. It was originally for rezoning. Have that listed that it, you know, when it went to the public hearing for the planning commission, and then if it went to the board, um, of course, that was just an example. So this is going to change to a conditional use permit. But it would be, it would be nice to see the numbers, what the disposition was from the planning commission and then a follow-up as far as what it is concerned. Just in a quick list of all of them that come for us, like for the year.
And we have that one ready because we do it for, and for, but we should be able to do something to post now on the website. That would be great.
I think that, um, one of the ladies that spoke out against the central apartments, I mentioned, you know, having difficulty following along with the different changes they, she wasn't aware that it had been pushed pushed back and, yeah.
Maybe you could even put some links in that if they wanted the information to go to what the original packet was or whatever, that it would just be like a hyperlink that would take you to, you know, that information from when it came before us or the board. That would certainly help the citizens as well. But when I go back and want to reference something, that would be something really useful for me instead of having to go back to the paper copies as well to see.
We have some of these because it is several months down where we're notifying the adjacent again, just as a courtesy of what that does.
It's on the same kind of, uh, issue, but maybe we could even put, I don't know if we want to do a sidebar, like you said, uh, coming attractions like the Wawa, like the Starbucks, like the Dunkin' Donuts, like the Orchards, put all of our projects somewhere on there so that when they get talked about, if they're just the beginning, if they're in the second stage, if they're waiting for review, that that way, like you said, the citizens could see it. We might know it, but that way, if people ask, they could go on that click and they look and see all the stuff that's in the pipeline right now.
But the blog seems to get more attention.
Well, that's what I've seen out there.
So maybe.
So maybe add a little something to the blog, so.
They could go search.
So they have good information on what we've really got coming instead of the bad information that keeps showing up on.
Yeah.
Like a whole Walmart. Haven't, I haven't heard anything on a Walmart.
Yeah, that was the original thing when they first started. I think because they thought maybe it had a pharmacy, but I don't know. Well, we keep talking about, can we talk about other stuff, honey?
I still I still get to hear a lot of cries for the pharmacy. That's probably the number one thing that I hear out in the public.
Yeah, and then I didn't know, I mean, I guess we're in public. Well, maybe we should add, I was just going, I was wondering. I mean, Food Line is right there. Some Food Lines in town have pharmacies. Is there any way we could reach out as a planning commission or is that something EDA could do to ask Food Line if they could do a standalone, maybe one of these out parcels? I know it won't fit in their building, but would they be interested in maybe getting one of these out parcels? Because that way they're here. If we can't get a Walgreens or that because we don't have enough rooftops, we don't meet their corporate plan or whatever it is, maybe somebody that's already here. I mean, I was just curious if it needs, we don't seem to reach out to people to.
I thought that had been done sometime back.
It did, okay.
But it's probably been a while, so, um, I'll get with Mr. Ashcraft and see if maybe we can do it through EBA or.
It's like, you don't have any else on, Commissioner comments. Does anybody remember, did I start with you last time or did I start with you last time? Do we remember? You want to go first? Let's go in order. Okay, let's start with the ladies.
That's fine.
Miss, honey.
Really just want to thank the staff, um, and Ms. Graham for all the work that y'all have done for all the reports, et cetera. I know you probably went through quite a bit to get things ready for a public hearing tonight for things to change at the last minute. So thank you for being flexible and working with our applicants, um, to make those changes. And thank the audience for coming tonight.
Well, first thing I would say, if anybody was here for the public hearing, I'm sorry we didn't have one for you, but please keep yourself informed for the next. You know, for the public, for us to get that the last minute notice to say it, but if publics came here just for that public hearing. Sorry that you got the last minute notice like we did. But I'd like to thank all the public for showing tonight, staff for your work. And I can't believe we go get out this early.
Uh, yeah, did a, uh, certainly thank you for the audience that showed up tonight, uh, staff of the, uh, the effort on these reports, putting together the packets, um, and, uh, yeah. Can't believe how early it is. It is a early one for sure and, um, this would have been a good one for a workshop.
Exactly, that's what I was saying.
But to that, to that, uh, note, I do look forward to when we should start narrowing down another list of, you know, we we know that the ordinances and zonings, it's constantly changing, uh, thing that we have to address in the planning commission and and there's, we're not perfect, uh, the ordinance. The ordinances are not perfect, zonings aren't perfect, um, but I look forward to addressing and just continuing to address these on a regular basis and and, um, and tweak as needed and, uh, and we'll just continue to work for, you know, for it's, uh, yeah, streamlining things, um, being more consistent, uh, across, you know, across areas, across ordinances. And, um, I thought there's a, you know, Mason called up a really good point tonight, uh, that breakfasts are very similar to short-term rentals, uh, Airbnbs. Yeah, that's a inconsistency that I see that's in our ordinance and so, um, so those types of things, that's why it's important for the public to to show up to to speak at our meetings because we don't catch everything and, um, as Mason, they live in an area where it it something like that would directly impact their, so, um, so we wouldn't know otherwise. So, uh, that's why it's important to be here and and speak or be online and speak. I know a lot of times we have the skeleton group here for audiences, so, um, but this is where a lot of those projects start. So if I was to tell anybody to, as far as where to where to go to for county developments, uh, probably need to start in our meetings and and get it at the very beginning, so, um, yeah.
Um, I guess I'd like to go back to a joint meeting here a few weeks ago. I I felt really good that the board seemed to listen to a lot of what we had put a lot of time and effort into and and didn't seem to get a whole lot of kickback on the the proposal we had come up with. And I know I've been only a little over a year now, but we've covered a lot of ground and I've I've said it before, I'll say it again, the getting these ordinances really nailed down because they have been so open to interpretation for so long. I know it's late night sometimes, obviously, tonight is a bonus, but the more time we spend now, it's just gonna pay off dividends in the years to come. With these zoning cases, just just people knowing what they can and cannot do, and not a whole lot of guesswork in there. We'll just save everybody a lot of time and effort. So was very happy with the joint meeting and look forward to going to phase two and trying to really just get some of these things ironed out.
You know, everything everybody else said, and like I said, it is unfortunate. I said, we didn't even find out till we got to the meeting. As William said, that it was canceled, so it's hard to let anybody else know in advance that, uh, that has happened, but the applicant does that at twenty-fourth hour. That's the way it goes sometimes. I thank everybody for coming. Like I said, it was a fairly thin crowd, but any crowd is better than no crowd. So thanks for coming. I hope everybody had a nice Labor Day. Another thing we want to talk about is the comp plan and the ordinances. As we, I've always pushed in my twelve years on the board and I guess eight years on the thing, I should, um, that is a living document. It should have been changed long ago. But as Ms. Graham and the future board, with the help of Mr. Wagner, Mr. Brean, we have worked through that and finally gotten our plan set. So thanks, everyone and all of us for that. And it is a living document and I want to provide that maybe we should revisit, which we are doing, the ordinances. We may want to look at complaint again too, because like I said, it's supposed to be looked at every year really. And then we we can make a few changes. And then that we, we can make a few changes of things, like I said, this Mason brought up some good ideas, people, the board, the, the breakfasts at Verbo. That way we can get back to what we're supposed to be doing. I like that. It's come a long way since, Mr. Williams, you were on the board way back then too. So you know what we had to do.
I've seen a lot of changes.
Exactly. And I think I'll stay, and I want to thank all my members on the board as well. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and properly seconded. Does anybody want to, no, just, no discussion? We're all called.
Ah.
Hi.
Hi. Hi, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.